Welcome everybody to the work session. May the seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Bowden, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with bowed heads and humble hearts. We thank you for all you have given us. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for the sun. We thank you for the rain that you provide for all of our needs. Help us to remember your love for us. Give us the patience and understanding to face life challenges with grace. Father, we ask your blessing on this workshop meeting and all gathered here with us today. Thank you for each person present here today. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom to do what is right for all of the citizens of our beautiful city of Nacogdoches. Father, we thank you for bringing us together and we acknowledge that none of it would be possible without you. We love you and we need you this day and every day. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. You'll stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, Rhonda, we have anything in open form?
No, sir.
Okay, no open form? Okay. Item four. This is a work session and items included under work session are intended to provide opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not make formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. Item A, review of proposed text amendments for the City of Nacogdoches Code of Ordinances, chapter one eighteen concerning definitions, non-conforming parcels and land use types, planned developments and correction to the zoning board of adjustments, process and procedures, and chapter forty-six regarding CBD and vape shops, and chapter seventy-eight, on-premises sign for feather signs commonly referred to as teardrop signs. I will turn this over to Nate.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nathan Dietrich and I'm a third-party consultant that's working with the planning and development department. And I've been here with staff for the last six months. I want to first thank you all for being here. I know that it's it's a volunteer job and you are all very busy and so we really appreciate you showing up and kind of giving us direction that we're looking for. I tend to talk a little bit fast, so if I start to go a little bit too quickly, please stop me and tell me to slow down. I appreciate that. So, as you can see, we kind of put together a quick table of context, but as as you can see in front of you, Ms. Amy has put together a color quoted, tabbed, perfect binder for you to look at. And for us, because we're going to be jumping around a little bit, I think it's going to help us make sure that we are on the same page and for me to be able to direct you to certain points of changes that we're looking to do. So, but I wanted to also thank the rest of the staff, starting with the city manager, Rick, the city secretary, Rhonda, city attorney, Jerry, Assistant City Planner One, Planning Coordinator, Amy, Tred from our GIS, who is our GIS analyst, for help in me gathering some of this data. So, thank you very much. You have a really good staff here. I really enjoy working with them. All right, so part of the agenda and how we've kind of conducted this today is that the introduction is why are we here for a joint meeting? This is a joint meeting with planning, zoning and city council, just so we can align our direction with our recommending body and our decision makers and give staff the opportunity to amend or adjust prior to bringing these actual amendments to you for approval. Secondly, we, for ease, we tried to categorize these into three different categories. One, starting off with definitions. And then with those definitions, they was caused certain changes to other sections of the ordinances. So, there's some, I don't I want I don't want to call it unintended consequences because they're intended consequences, but I wanted to let you know is that staff is aware that, you know, if you change one thing here, it could change three or four over here. So, we did our homework and we made sure that we we looked at this very intently. And then lastly is we want to talk about procedure, about land uses and philosophy of discussions and how we can move forward with some of the changes that we're proposing. The goals here are to stay high level and also just to receive feedback from you, okay? There's no decisions that are going to be made here today. We're just hoping to get direction. And then the goal would be to bring these text amendments back to first the recommending body and then to city council for for approval. And then if there are any amendments or changes or whatever that might be, please let us know and we'll make sure that we include those in when we bring them back to you, okay? The amendments were presented to you. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to read them. We felt that the best way to do it was to tell you the reason or what the subject matter is and then tell you the why, why we were going to change it. And then the research and the research that we did in order to come up with that conclusion. All right. So, first category that we have is called definitions and clarity. So, the reasons behind this is for a better understanding and clarity to the subjects based off the interactions that I've had with staff, but previously with staff I had previously where some of the people aren't here today. But these were some of the things that they brought up to me that said that they wanted to have some changes. And the goal, again, the goal the goal is to have buy-in and before any decisions are made from the staff level. So, we kind of put these definitions into these separate categories. One of them that first came to us was public right-of-way. There is no definition in our zoning code for public right-of-way, which is something that we use on a regular basis within our interactions with with folks. Also, there was no definition for street. But in in research for those two particular ones, we did have other definitions in other chapters within our our code for public works and engineering. But we we also wanted this to be a very inclusive project. So, we included public works and engineering, came up with some items for or definitions that we have found in our ordinance and in other people's ordinances and found a definition that suits all of our needs. And so, those are the ones that are before you today that you would be able to look at in your red lines that are associated with each of these separate items. The same goes for street. So, we also went to public works and engineering, talked a case, and we came up with a good definition for a street. And again, utilizing some other folks, some other jurisdictions as as comparative values for that. And we feel that we have come up with some pretty good definitions for that. Part of what we also wanted to tackle was we had we had reference to duplex in our ordinance, but we had no definition for it. It was called out in something that was not, didn't have a reference name or otherwise known as. So, we wanted to include that as part of it because there had been some misconceptions previously when trying to associate duplex or two to home dwelling. And so, this this will help clarify that that problem that we had in the past. So, again, we're just cleaning up our definition section and this is just a reference to that. Part of, and I'm going to take you to this, actually, before I go on, does anyone have any questions?
Um, I have a.
Sure.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we find at the end of the day that we really need a three-step process, you outlined that it's going to be a two-step process that
Sure.
we come give you feedback and then the next step will be to bring it back to us to vote on on things. I'm I am, I believe that what we're doing is very, very serious here and it has a lot of repercussions and many possibly unintended consequences. So, I want to make sure that we do this right and we have everything correct. And I know that's what everybody wants to do here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I I hope that we consider that we might possibly need an extra step in this process just to make sure that everything's right. Because it's not just editing. It's not just fixing definitions. We're actually making some substantial.
Yes, ma'am. And and remember, these are and these are suggestions, right? That's why staff wanted to bring it to you first. Because if you're not interested in it, then we can leave it the same. And that's that's totally fine. These were just some of the items that were brought up from staff's perspective that we thought we might be able to change. And these are some of the ways that we could change them.
And I had one other question. How much time have you? I know this has been a huge amount of time. You've invested both Jerry and you and the whole staff. Rough estimate, how many hours? It was like.
Oh, dear. I don't even know if I could tell you. Because a lot of the times what happens is you start talking about one thing and then we look at these unintended consequences and we go to another. And so, it it creates a very large conversation, hours upon hours, lots of hours.
So, as you think about that, we have contact every day, sometimes every week, with the people who live here in the city who have had zoning issues, drainage issues, code enforcement issues. And and these are complex issues to all of them. So, we need to have enough time to think this through and see how this applies to people in all of the different neighborhoods.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's all I was
Of course.
That's the reason why I'm just a note of caution.
Sure.
That's really what I'd like to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, no problem at all.
That's it. And and so, when you're going through this, are you going to go through the definitions? Or I had some questions on definitions, but
Sure.
are you going to go?
I wanted to try to keep it high level. And that's so we weren't here for four hours. But at any given time, yes, if we want to drill down to any of those definitions, please do. Let's and let's talk about it. So, would you like to go to discuss one specifically?
Well, were you going to present anything about definitions or were you already over?
Yeah, so, okay, so in this, in these nine squares that I have here, those were kind of the significant changes that we were talking about. The next part that I was going to get to is that in looking at our current way that our definitions are are set up, especially for dwelling units, like for example, single-family attached, single-family detached, single-family, multifamily, all of those are kind of strewn about because it's all done alphabetized, right? So, I've been part of other jurisdictions where what we did was we used one common word, which was dwelling unit, and we put them all under dwelling unit. So, it's called out from that common, a common word to say dwelling unit, multifamily, dwelling unit, single-family detached, and then so on and so forth. So, that way, it it was our opinion that when people or users come to our city, they're able to see all those those land use types all at once, especially from a single-family residential side. And it just helps with clarity, helps with consistency, helps with them saying, oh, this is, this makes sense. So, that was just one is kind of a more reorg than it was actually changing the definitions. The next is vape and smoke shops definitions. That was done with the the request by a city council member. And so, when looking at comparative cities and other things like that, we're going to get into that a little bit further because we did change the definition that's in chapter forty-six, which is in our health and sanitation. It's actually not in the zoning code. But we are going to anchor that definition and keep it in forty-six. And then everywhere else where we talk about vape shops in in zoning, we're going to reference, if we're going to use that that definition, we're going to reference forty-six. Just so if there's any other changes, we don't have to multiply, change it here, change it here, change it here. You can just go to one spot and change it and be be done with it.
So, can you tell me which page you're on? Because you're flipping back and forth.
Yes, sir, of course. So, we are from the vape shops.
Fifty-one. Fifty-one. Are you going to go back to each of these sections or have we?
Again, I was just trying to, I was just going to kind of keep it level or high level, but if you want me to go through each and every one, thank you. I'd be happy to do that.
Um, and I
Sure.
So, I, in the in the definitions, I have some very high-level questions.
Okay, sure. So, let's start off with public right-of-way. And so, we'll start off at page seventeen. Want to go through those?
I have questions on on page eleven.
Okay.
If you're, I mean, if we're going through this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have several questions about dwelling and duplex.
Okay.
So, it it seems to be I have questions all over here. First of all, is family defined or family unit defined?
Yeah, if you if you go down on page six or page twelve, I'm sorry, and then you go down to family, family means any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit in which not more than two individuals are unrelated by blood, marriage or adoption.
Is family unit defined or is that what you're inferring is a family? And the reason this is high level is because who lives in duplexes? And then what zoning is really, has been a real difficulty in over the past several years and will be in the future if we don't. Is a family unit a a family or?
So, to be honest, so we also looked at this from a planning side of things. And there is another city that has kind of gone through these kind of hardships with with what I think you're referring to. And that was going to be another another submittal for a different a different day. We were going to come back and start and and kind of address those types of because we live in a in a college town. And I think what, I think this is what you're assuming or or trying to relate it back to is that what is a family and, you know, how how is that done, right? This was right here. We were just putting dwelling and kind of reorganizing and I didn't change any of the the definitions for that, if that makes sense.
Sure.
But we we can address that. I mean, I, we understand that it needs to be addressed. That was just a bigger, more polarizing issue. And we just, we were kind of trying to do our low-hanging fruit here a little bit and then get to those harder topics at a at a later date.
Okay, well, so a really hard topic for me
Yes, ma'am.
is and a high-level topic. And and let me give you a little background. When I came into this position, there were three basic things that I was hit with and one was zoning. And one was, of course, code enforcement because we have multifamily living in single-family zoned areas. And then, of course, we had, and historic neighborhoods. So, these are all high-level things that really impact everybody. So, when we get into dwelling and a duplex, you had some some things on, let me find your page here. I have like three different documents because I've read this at different times. But a duplex is a two-family unit. So, that's back to the family unit. And 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 it's only in an R-three. If you have a duplex in an R-four, you have multifamily. Is that correct?
So, the way that our ordinance works is that you could have a duplex in, you could you could subdivide it in R-four and or you could have duplexes on multiple duplexes on one on one parcel. But as soon as you exceed, how how our ordinance is called out for multifamily, as soon as you exceed more than three dwelling units on a property. So, if you had one duplex, right, and then you had a second one, that's four dwelling units that are right there. So, with the construction of this half of duplex, you're already exceeding and this would be considered now multifamily.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and but I think I I had a lot of confusion with your statements and I'll find it on your page. But let me find it on this. See if I can get the right.
Page six, I think.
Is that it? So, the basic issue here is that a duplex in an R-four is still multifamily. And so, whatever it is we do, we have to consider it multifamily. Multifamily parking, it comes in in the parking. Duplexes have different, but it's multifamily if it's in an R-four because the zoning will actually supersede anything we call it. And particularly if we're looking at how closely related people are. If it's an R-four, it's still multifamily. And I think you have a, let me find a duplex here in yours. I think that's confusing in here and I think it really has to be clarified that in an R-four.
Okay. I I mean, I would agree to an extent. And I think we're talking about the same thing. But as soon as you have, like, say if they were to have one duplex in an R-four, right? Because because duplexes by right are allowed to be built in an R-four without any SGP or anything along those lines, right?
Sure.
And as soon as they meet that multifamily benchmark, which means that they have more than three dwelling units on that parcel, then I would agree that it would be, it would be multifamily. And it would be considered, it would have to park the same way, it would have to do all those same things. But until it does, if it was just one single duplex by itself, I would I would not agree that it would need to meet all of those parking requirements. At this, I mean, that that is, again, my opinion, right?
And I know we're staying high level, but let me just give you the next high level.
Sure.
Throughout the document, there are several things about intent and what people intend to use it and fuzzy words like that. And it's, to me, we can't rely on what somebody's intent is. So, if they're in an R-four, which is multifamily, and all I'm saying, you can take this back to the drawing board if you want and we can talk about it at a separate time. But that is a huge issue.
Okay.
The and and intent again, whether they intend to have one family or two families to to say it comes into play once they do something else. We have so many other things dependent on the fact that it's R-four and the permissions that we give it for parking, the permissions that we give it for everything else. We, I just, we just really need to think through whether that's multifamily. And you're welcome to join in.
Can I add something?
And I actually have some verbiage that I looked through, but
Sorry, dear.
that I could help, but I can't find it.
Jerry Baker, city attorney. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. I was, I would refer you to page seventy-four of your packet.
Is that the parking?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
So, I I think this may get to the question you were asking. One of the proposals we were making is that to include a basically, you know, a caveat here. If if it's zone R-four, then multifamily parking is going to be required irrespective of what type of dwelling would be located there.
Right.
So, but it's not just, it's not just parking. I mean, I I really appreciate that and I saw that that had been corrected and put in there about that.
Okay, I guess.
But if it's, if it's multifamily, so when you're considering maybe having a variance or some other, if it's multifamily, it has a something different because it can be used as multifamily. Anytime it's multifamily, it can be used for, you know, many apartment, I mean, many people, different people, not related. So, that's something, I think. And I'd be happy to sit down with you all, but that's a huge, huge issue to me.
Okay.
Huge. And it particularly comes into play in our neighborhoods. There are some multifamily that back up to single-family and it it really will have a lot of repercussions. So, I just want to
But your concern, and if I could clarify, your concern is is solely with R-four, is that correct?
Well, my concern is, first of all, that we have, I I'm, I think, I commend you, all of you who have worked on this for trying to get the definition straight. I just don't think it's quite straight yet because there's some confusion between two different points that I highlighted that relates to duplexes. And and I do think where it comes to play is when you have what you are saying is a duplex in an R-four. Because it's really the zoning that is going to determine a lot and and what people not only can do, but what they do do. And in that same line, whenever we have intent or or what it's designed for or what it's, those, those are, we have, in my last forty years here in Nacogdoches, I've seen things that were intended to be done that were done the opposite. And so, we have to really clear that language up, too.
Can I say something right away? You have a presentation to make, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we stay on task with this, if it's if it's okay with the council? And then we know that this is going to be more than one workshop. There's no question about it. But I would like to hear his entire presentation and then that way we can go back and get into the weeds on everything. But I think the intent today, if I'm not, if I'm wrong, correct me, is for you to present this, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then I I agree with Kathleen, there there will probably be one or more discussions, one or more workshops on this to where we can dive into the weeds. But I would, if it pleases the council, I'd like for you to continue your presentation.
That would be great.
Is that all right, Kathleen?
It might.
Because we never will get out here.
Well, I I apologize profi, I only have a few. These are like one of three areas. But I apologize profusely that I thought we had covered definitions already or something. Anyway, I'm not sure where you're going with your presentation.
Okay.
Very happy to.
Yeah, again, I was
But I do have areas.
And and I'll be happy, I'll make sure that I make adjustments with that. I wanted to try to keep it high level because you have what we are proposing here and then we can always have that conversation or we can get together again or but I just wanted to kind of get, give you guys the the high level of how we came to this, how we came up with these things. So, with, under vape shops, actually, does anyone have anything about the dwelling unit and how we kind of coordinated that minus minus the duplexes? But so, I just wanted to know, I think we're good there.
I have other things about dwelling units, but I'll keep them to myself right now.
That's great. And and what we can do is we can open a conversation via email and we can work through that for sure, okay? For for vape and smoke shops, there was, we did have reference in our in our code and in our chapter forty-six, which is our health and sanitation code.
What page is that?
That is under
Vape shops.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, thank you. So, we were tasked with kind of having utilizing zoning because zoning is 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 used for that, for dictating where land uses can and can't be, correct? And so, we we came up with a better definition. Instead of, we kind of had it separated out for different times, types of devices. We kind of put it all into one. We have electronic smoke device. We have what tobacco and vape smoke is and what a store is. And then what we have, what is smoking. And then that is in health and sanitation. So, those were the changes that we were, we we are recommending to make in forty-six. And then in definitions in one eighteen, which is our zoning ordinance, we reference back to forty-six just to make for clarity and consistency within our ordinances. And then lastly, in in our land use matrix table, we call out on page fifty-seven, retail tobacco, vapor and smoke stores. And here, we are now regulating them as a specific land use. They, what we had before was more retail. We were kind of lumping it into retail because people were purchasing things. There was a reference to tobacco, but it was more like a warehousing industrial type of use. So, this is now more of a retail tobacco sale. And we are now asking for a special use permit within those business areas and then permitted by right in our industrial areas.
Now, there's one thing that concerns me on that is that in here, it says that all of that power will be given to the city staff rather than going to council. Am I wrong?
Well, no.
The ability, a special, special permit and all of that stuff.
Special use permit has to follow the current day practices for how how we do a special use permit today. So, it has to go through
There's a lot of streamlining in this, though, it seems like. And I don't have the exact page number, but the ones I read, it seems like they were, they were transferring a lot of these powers and decisions over to the planning and zoning staff rather than coming before us.
Nope, not not in this one.
I'm left-handed, so it's possible.
That's okay, no, no problem at all. We did, there is some, there was some movement in some of the other sections and processes that we were looking to do that. Maybe maybe that's what you're remembering. We were looking to actually give those, some of those powers for flexibility and for 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 a developer to get through the process a little bit quicker.
That's what I read.
And we can do that, but that doesn't happen to be for this particular one. So, a special use permit for this one has to follow through P and Z, through city council, and they would have to follow that for for a tobacco and vape store. And then additionally, what we have here is we have other exceptions that include distancing requirements for those those particular types of of retail uses. So, as it shows in eighteen one thirty-six or on page sixty-one, we would add in this section that states that the minimum distance for any of these, and it's used as a straight line without regard for any being structures or objects, to the nearest portion of the building or structure used as part of the premise where a retail tobacco, vapor, or smoke store is located to the nearest property line of the premise of a church. Where a retail tobacco, vapor, smoke store is located to the nearest property line of the premise of a church, place of worship, public or private elementary or secondary school, a public park, a hospital. Or other retail tobacco, vape or smoke stores. So that is another requirement of these types of uses within the city or what we're proposing to you. And, um, and that's just to, to govern that, that, that particular land use, so we don't have a proliferation of it.
Nathan, what I was gonna bring up is that we did start looking at this fairly early on. That if you, if you just drive down north, you've got a cadence of them and they are each, it's actually ironic, you know, cellphone repair next to vape shop. I mean, every one of the strip shopping centers in proximity to the university, not that it's the healthiest thing out there, I mean. So Sugarland, uh, recently did something similar because of that proliferation when you get to the inline retail. This was something that was deliberate because, no, I don't think it's the healthiest thing to have, you know, right next to the school, so. And Jerry looked at it and it should be defensible and it, it's probably just not the best look, so yes, those would be grandfathered that are there, but as they change hands. You at least would not have them basically every three hundred feet.
Let me ask one question, you mentioned changed hands, but not changed the shop itself to something else, not ownership change?
Correct, if, the change of use.
Okay.
Yeah, the change of use and now granted, if, if a, somebody buys a center and they, they're waiting for leases to time out so they can. Maybe take over the whole center with something else, then, and if, if it's a center that's between two others that have them, then theoretically, they wouldn't be able to come. And put another one in later. If it actually goes through a change, you used to say a, a restaurant or something for a while.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, moving on to a sign type, um, that is another definition that we are proposing, a new definition within our code. It's in under page thirty-six, um, or I'm sorry, thirty-seven. And these are, we wanted to define what a feather sign was, AKA teardrop sign. These are the signs that you see all throughout the city or any city that you go in. Usually it's a grand opening or hey, come over here and see what we're doing, just a, a, a tension grabber. And we were asked to kind of put together, um, or Jerry was asked, I'm sorry, to put together some, um, a proposal of what we could do within our ordinance to. Police this particular types of signs. And so we're going to get into the nitty gritty of that later on, but I just wanted to share with you that this was the proposed definition, the only definition for this. And this is going to be in chapter seventy-eight. But we'll get to, um, you know, the why for the signs and, and what we're going to be doing from a, on a code enforcement. And, and just as an FYI, we do, we reached out to code enforcement, um, within our, within the city structure. And they are here, which I, I think is very great, they're very interested and they were, they were a part of the decision-making process. Um, what we're going to be presenting to you later, so, thank you. Okay, and then also we have, um. We, we recommended at this particular time, some additional, um, definitions for multi-person or kind of group assemblies. Like group homes and halfway houses. We currently had, or just recently had, um, uh, the S U P that came before both P N Z and, and city council. And we, what it seemed in our definitions is that we had very few types of these types of homes overall. And when you actually go to a number of other cities, they have, um, you know, on average, seven to ten additional types, you know, to. Further define what these places are like, right? And I think at this particular time, if we had those before we, we went through this S U P, um, just recently, we probably would have been able to better define what that was. And so we came in, and I know that was kind of a part of the discussion, um, uh, when Snap brought this to you. And so we came up with, um, seven new definitions, and this is on page twenty-three to twenty-six. And again, this is just for helpful clarification, um, also from the, the point of, uh. To help staff better understand exactly what is allowed in these particular sections, so there's no guessing. But going through, starting at twenty-three. We, we added in assisted living center and that was one, uh, that we did add in. And if you change or go over to twenty-six, there was a, we did have a, um, uh, a definition, uh, for family home or family group home. But we, we updated it with the one that's currently there. We also added in a group day home care home facility on twenty-seven. We removed the halfway house criminal, uh, again, this is a proposal, this is, we're proposing to do this, okay? And we felt that we, we were able to, we had a new definition for the, the halfway home, um, criminal, um, over on. Um, on page thirty-one. So you'll see rehabilitation care facility, rehabilitation care institution, and then also retirement housing for the elderly. So those are all new, um, definitions. We included the word, um, sanitarium in the psychiatric hospital, that was more of a, a, a term that a lot of other, um. Cities were using as, as psychiatric place, so we just wanted to make them synonymous, so other folks knew what to look for when they came in to look at our, our ordinances. And then we also on page twenty-eight was household care facility and household care institution. So we felt that that just kind of made it more robust as to these types of, um, um, facilities that are throughout our city. And that we can more easily define what they are. And then what we would do if, if and when we brought this back to you, we would also put these into a land use matrix. And then we would give them whether they were allowed by special use permit and/or if they were allowed by right. And so we would have that discussion at that particular time, okay? All right. So those are all the definitions that I've, I, that, um, I have for you right now, oh, I'm sorry, one last one is that. We also are proposing, um, uh, a, a difference in our ordinance be- for the word variance and special exception. Currently, we, we talk about both of them throughout the ordinances, but when you actually get down to it and you really look into the wording. There, there isn't a lot of difference and we want to make sure that there, there actually is a difference in, in those two types of uses. That come before the zoning board of adjustments, so we want to make sure that we govern that too, make sure that there's a distinction between the two of them. So there is a, a change under. Under page one oh two. That just gives more of a definition of what that, the special exceptions are, how they, how they work and what they are in the, in the, in the ordinance. So we would be bringing back, maybe polishing up a little bit, but we would want to show that difference between the variance and the special exception. Okay, moving on to, is there any questions or I'll just wait to the end, yes, sir?
Please.
Yes, sir. Okay, so then this moves to category two, so of those definitions, they, what we found was, there was these impacts to other sections of the ordinance because of the definitions that we took. Or that we added, and so. Um, and again, we wanted just to make sure that we're consistent and very thorough with, with our reviews. So moving on to those definitions and how they had impact, is that for, for the public right of way. What, what's happened there is that, uh, and, and I'm sorry, there was a typo in, in, in the why statement, is that. The, the couple of definitions that were not in the definitions list was a public right of way. So how that impacts other ordinances is that we would have in chapters one, um, I believe it's chapters one. I think one, seventy-eight, ninety and ninety-eight, there are going to be, uh, changes or referencing back to the street, um, the public street right of way or the public right of way. So those are changes that we're going to be bringing back to you because that, those would reference the, the definition, the new definition within the zoning code. And the same would go for a street, um, in, in that particular, um. In, in those, uh, those same, uh, in those same particular, uh, chapters. So the group type land uses that we had talked about, and again, we would bring those back to you, those are all of the, the, the group, like the, uh. The home facilities or the family facilities and the group home facilities, those, those particular, uh, definitions, we again would bring those back to you. And actually give them, uh, particular locations in the, the zoning matrix and either done by right or done by S U P. The duplex is, again, was used throughout our code, but, um, wasn't defined in our definitions. So we ended up attaching duplex to the two family attached, and so that's how we kind of made that, um, that connection there. So along with that, with duplex, we, we knew that there was an association with parking, so we ended up going into the parking ordinance, looked at that. We, we made some changes there, um, in the R four zoning category, so if we went to.
You already showed us that.
Okay, so we were proposing that, and then additionally, what, what we have found is that there are. Or since I've been working with staff, is that there's been discussions of having opportunity or flexibility for allowing, um. There to be like a, a different type of parking, uh, demands maybe sort of or, um, a form-based parking, um, analysis that was provided by an engineer. Something that's different that allows, um, you know, if they can't meet the parking requirements, we would allow them to meet something along the lines. And so we wanted to get your temperature on, um, allowing more flexibility within the parking ordinance. For different developments that happen, maybe in the historic district or the downtown district. Somewhere that there might be limitations on parking because of how things were developed at that particular time. So there is a big push, um, nationally on, um, you know, doing more maximum type parking versus minimum parking spaces. And, or getting rid of parking altogether, just, um, it might, that, that might be too far-fetched at this particular time, but. But there might be some areas that it might actually help, um, for redevelopment and other things like that. So it's just something that we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of, there are sometimes, there's trends that, that do help with, um, uh, economic development. So we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of those things. And, and again, one of the cities that we were using as kind of a comparative city was St. Marcus, St. Marcus has, you know, the, the university there, very similar to here. And they have done a deep dive in, you know, a lot of their definitions and how they deal with short-term rentals, how they deal with rentals for, um, student rentals that are happening. So that was going to be the next step or that was going to be part of what I was going to propose later on. But that might be something that we can look into, um, utilizing or not, not reinventing the wheel, but just looking at someone that's already done it and done a good job of it. Going back to the feathered flag, if we go to that, that particular page thirty-five. So we added the definition. And the idea behind that is, um, that so- sometimes these types of signs, if, if not, uh, policed. That they can become a nuisance, and so what we are proposing here, and this was again, uh, city council-driven or maybe more of an inquiry. Is there, was there something that we could do about it? So, um, part of that is, yes, provide the definition, secondly, that, um, under page forty-three, we show how we would enter. How we would put that within our ordinance and they are allowed except for as allowed in section seventy-eight, um, dash ninety-eight through seventy-eight dash one hundred. So if we flip the page over to forty, page forty-seven. You'll see what a feather sign is and how it may be used on site. And when we, um, talked to the other, uh, with code enforcement who would be enforcing this, so we wanted to get their take on it and see how, what, what made sense, what was reasonable from their side of things. Cause currently that's something that we're not policing, we're not policing those types of signs, we're not asking them to apply for those signs. So what this would do is that they would have to come in and apply for those signs. Some ordinances that we looked at, they allow them by right overall, some other ordinances, they allowed them, um, to happen, um. You know, a couple of times a year, other ones, they allow maybe, you know, um, only in specific areas that are allowed within, um, across the city. So we went kind of back and forth, I've been a part of a city where they were allowed, um, by right and they become very, a nuisance very quickly. And, and then what, what happens is they, they're never maintained very well and then it's kind of a blight on the city. And so what we ended up coming up with as a, as a suggestion is that we would allow these types of signs. But only allow them for, like, say, we wanted to start out with four times a year, like as a kind of a special sign. And they would apply for them and then through our new permit, um, system, they can be. You can number how many times that they request those, so it's easy to, to follow and follow the data. And so, um, our code enforcement department thought that was reasonable, and so that's what we, we were proposing to you is to allow these, these types of signs, but with limitations. All right, um. And moving on to vape stores, which is, just turning the page, um, on to fifty-one. We've already kind of talked about that. And we've already kind of showed you where the exceptions and the variances are, where we wanted to kind of show those, those changes. So that, that's already been discussed, so moving on to. Category three is more of a review of the process and procedure and philosophy. So these are the three areas that staff wanted to discuss with you, um, which is plan unit developments. We have some, a board of adjustment procedures and amendments, and then we also have a discussion of non-conformity, um, focusing mostly on single family. So with, um, plan development, there is a red line that's in our, in our packet under page one fifty or one, sorry, off one thirteen. So a planned development, I know that it might be redundant, but I'm just doing it for those people that might not know here that are in the audience. Is that this is something that is offered to developers within the city to provide greater flexibility for land use density and other regulations. So they want to preserve natural amenities and environmental assets of the, on the land. You want to find a balance between intensity and development, um, and adequate supporting facilities. Facilitate more effective arrangement of buildings, land uses and utilities and protect contiguous land uses. So this is something that, you know, happens a lot in, in, in other cities. Under first, or a- a- after first blush of reading through this, um, there, it is very systematic. I just think that, in my opinion, there seems to be a little bit of, of red tape that goes along with the navigation of this. So part of what we were trying to do is we were looking to, um, make this maybe, uh, a little bit less intensive of, of a process. But still have the oversight that, that a city would want to have, right? So, um, the idea for that would be, is also to move, uh, remove redundancies that we found within the ordinance itself and then. And then the big change would be is to give a minimum requirement for acreage for these types of developments. Why staff believes that's important is because I think there is an opportunity for people to use this this particular tool as a as a loophole. And having those, without having those minimums on it, someone could walk in and say, I want to do a planned development on a five thousand square foot lot. And I don't we I don't truly believe that's what the the reason for a planned development is. So the idea, and again, this number is really up to both of the commission and city council. But what we found is that other other cities that I've worked for, we had a minimum of at least three acres at one place that I've worked at. We believe that if you really look at what you can fit in on three acres, you probably still do a pretty good development and it allow for certain deviations to our our ordinances. But and again, what's it's it's kind of what you're looking for, what what you're trying to attract. I've also lived, I worked at cities where we had a ten acre development was the minimum that you could use a plan development. So it's just something to, it's something to think about. But I would highly suggest that we do something like that because I think we'll end up, we'll end up having better development within the city. All right. And then part of and Councilman Brad is that this is the part where staff was proposing to remove not all of the, I guess, how am I going to try to say this? Is that overall, city council and planning commission would still have the the approval authority for the for the plan development. The thought behind what we were proposing was instead of it having to go back through both commissions and city council, that staff could implement what city council would say, right? And if there were anything that was changed from the ordinance that was adopted, then we would send them through, we would say, we can't do this. You have to go back through the the process. But if it was exactly what you asked for, then the thought would be is that we could push it along and review it to the degree that, you know, you approved it as, and it would just like be following an ordinance, right? And and then it wouldn't have to go through back through the process to be reevaluated, reapprived. So that that was our thought.
What was wrong with going back through the process?
It just takes longer, just takes longer. It's it's no disrespect to anybody. It's more so whenever you go around and you talk to developers, and I know we're kind of developers are on this side, cities are on this side, right? We try to find a a meaningful balance, right? But a lot of the times, and especially after COVID, time is money. And it is, it's imperative for them to get through the process a little bit faster. And so the thought process here was is that we would still have that governing and that oversight that would still be there, but we would get them through the process a little bit quicker, that's all. And again, that and again, this is a proposal, this is not something that thou shalt. We're trying to get a feeling as to are you interested in doing something like that or are you not? So this is just kind of where we see development going. And I know that we we want to see development happen here. So this is just one of those things. Okay. And then the next one is the board of adjustment. So we just went through, staff went through inside of our ordinances. It says that Board of Adjustment shall adopt Policies and Procedures Manual. And what we noticed was that Policies and Procedures Manual wasn't read adopted since like two thousand and six. So we went back and read it, we noticed that there was there was some necessary updates that needed to be done. And so we just recently did that and adopted that through the zoning board of adjustment. But some of the other changes that we noticed in our our own ordinance is that with those changes in the board of adjustment, we needed to do some fixes within our ordinance. And so some of those fixes are as follows, is that under. So. Anyway, it is one part of, in this one small section, it basically states that for if there was a protest that was happening within the the development, that you needed to go back to planning and zoning. And that was an error in the in the way that it's done, and it's an error in the way that state laws is written. So we just fixed that, said it has to go back to council. So it was a very small change, it was more of a, I would look as if like you. Yeah, it was like tidying up some some things that were there, it was a cleanup. There were also words that shall have, you shall have four alternates on the zoning board of adjustment. And the alternates are something that is there for to ensure that you have a meeting to to happen, right? And we don't want that to be shall have that, we changed that the words to may. So they don't have to have four, they could have three, they got two, they could have one, just as long as they have some sort of options to keep the the board operational. We called out, they are under the hierarchy of having a chairperson and then a vice chair. In our ordinance, we didn't call out vice chair, so we added that back in as part of their hierarchy. So those policies and procedures match with our ordinance. We also explained what a special exception is. There were hearing dates that called out in the local government code. For city council, it's you have to have notification within fifteen days prior to the meeting date. And technically, it's the same for the board of adjustment. And so we were we were basing it off of of the planning and zoning timeframe. So we were just doing ten days. So we have changed that to fifteen days because it is a decision making body, just like you. And so it is fifteen days or we're proposing it to be fifteen days with that fix. We are requiring that all variances, special exceptions, all come in for. Or we, yes, we are requiring, we're saying thou shalt have a pre-conference meeting. The idea behind that is that sometimes when people come in, they think they need to have it, they don't necessarily need to have it. So sometimes we get through that process and they submit their monies and all this stuff. And then all of a sudden, we're like, well, you don't need it, we we just need to do this. And so we want to make sure that we can cut those or head those off at the pass. And so we just want them to come in to have that additional review by staff.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
One eighteen ninety, we may have picked the wrong board, it says shall receive compensation.
Yeah, you picked the wrong board.
You just tell us and we'll change, we'll change that for you, sir. And then we also added in here. It's again, it's it's preference, but for newly annexed properties, we were were stating that it shall automatically be zoned agricultural, which is the most stringent of all of our zoning districts. Meaning that someone just couldn't come in and kind of waiver on it, they would have to either make the decision at the time that they are zoning it or it needs to have a zone, okay, it needs to have a zone. So if they annex into the property, they're zoned automatically there, and then they can come back and rezone the property to whatever they, whatever's in line with the future land use plan. Does that make sense? Instead of instead of it leaving it up to them, so if they were to annex into the city, then they're nothing, right? So we want them to to be zoned as the most stringent of our zoning districts. Just and then it's automatically assumed in inside the city limits, because then it will be zoned. And then we also removed a large amount of redundancy in the in the procedures because because there were so many different like a procedure for special use permit, a procedure for rezoning. When you went through all of that, all of their procedures were the same. And so all we did was we removed the, you know, here's the amendment procedures for a special use permit or a rezoning. And if they were all the same, we just took out all that extra stuff. And then we put them all under the same procedures. And so it just kind of removed about five pages of redundant wording and different things like that. All right.
The slides have stopped moving, what what page are we on?
I'm sorry, sir. We just finished this and. So that that was through the board of adjustment. If you were to go under page one oh four, you can see where that's, actually, I'm sorry, go back to one hundred. And then you can see where we talked about the maximum of four members and to ensure a quorum is available. So it changed from shall to may. Under one oh one, where we added in the chair or the vice chair. So they are now a person that's in that hierarchy on the board. We did a some cleanup of some wording, we added in under one oh two, the special exceptions area. We added under one oh three, the 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 state law requirements for the the, pardon me, the the next meeting, for which notice can be provided following the hearing and not later than the sixtieth day after the date the appeal is filed. So we use that wording instead of within a reasonable time, since that is new state law. We just updated that just to make sure that it was in 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 unison with that. And then if we go to one oh four, here's the the request for the pre-application conference. Here's the changes under the notice of public hearing. You can see under one eighteen, one three-three before the fifteenth day. And then under one eighteen, under page one oh five, the zoning upon annexation, that is that change there. And then under one oh six shows the change to section one one eight, one three eight or one three nine, I'm sorry, a review of comprehensive plan, major thoroughfare plan, plan development, special use rezoning. And so just you'll notice as we start flipping through these next couple pages, you'll see a lot of strikeouts just because they were redundant in in what they were trying to tell the reader. So those were those changes. And lastly, we have nonconformity. So under under this particular one, under this category three, we wanted to bring forward to you, you folks to say that sometimes nonconformity, you know, nonconformity is nonconformity, right? And a lot of the times zoning is here to protect our single family residential, right? So I've been a part of when when you call these things out, so I guess what we're trying to say is is that there is, if a person that's using the property as a single family residential property and when we zoned or the city zoned their area and they happened to zone it industrial, let's just say for example, okay, now that person is considered nonconforming. So in my in my eyes and in other jurisdictions that I've worked, we found that to be unreasonable, especially from a a single family residential, a person that's trying to, you know, just live there and that they bought their house. And I mean, they can live there forever and ever, but nonconformity means that they can't expand or do anything on their property from that day forward. What we felt was reasonable is that if a person were to expand their property, but not like from a, they weren't expanding their air conditioned living space, but they were to expand by having a porch or a deck or a swimming pool or a shed out the back, something that they, you would associate to with a a reasonable person living as a reasonable, single family residential lifestyle, that we would allow those types of of improvements to be done to the lot versus looking at them as a nonconforming, completely nonconforming and not allowing anything to happen. So we wanted you to think about that, to allow for that to occur, as long as we call out what those types of uses might be. We feel that we have a reasonable way and a defensible way of allowing our single family residents to still live out their lives on their single family residential property. So we wanted to bring that forward to you guys. We also wanted to discuss nonconforming structures. And they're usually with a nonconforming structure, they're they encroach into like a side setback or something along those lines, right? It makes that whole structure nonconforming. However, if you look at it in a way that if you don't, if you allow the structure, that area that's encroaching into that side setback, if you don't increase the level of nonconformity for that that structure on that side, but if they wanted to expand their structure on the other side, where they were going to meet all of the other ordinance requirements, we also wanted to make sure that 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 if if that was something that you guys would look at, that would be reasonable when in looking at from a nonconforming status. And we believe that again, from a defensible side of things, by not increasing the nonconformity, we're still okay.
Is that changing the footprint of the building?
It could, but it wouldn't change the the footprint of the portion that's nonconforming already.
That opens up a lot of, I went through a zoning thing about that. And, you know, keeping that footprint of what was there was really important, so it's going to be a problem for me.
Yeah, right. And and again, this is why we're bringing it up, right? Yeah, so there, yeah, there is, there's always like, I I've just dealt with a lot of different things in in my course or over my my professional career and and sometimes having opportunities or options. And maybe it's not the same option that I'm saying right now, but maybe it's a variation thereof. It also just seems to help, it seems to also help residents too. You know, sometimes it's not, it's not good for everybody, but overall, it sometimes is good for the the majority of folks. So just something to consider. And then finally, we so we we use the data on the map that you can see before you. G I S, I I asked one of the analysts to to kind of look at some of the things that we, it's it's not perfect. But what he did was he kind of put these what-if statements inside and and created a a report. And basically, each of these areas or the ones you see highlighted are they are in various zoning districts. And then they put the the parameters of those zoning districts for lot dimensions, you know, for what, I guess it would be minimum lot size. And the ones that are highlighted, there are over three thousand, three thousand parcels in the city currently right now out of the six thousand plus parcels in Nacogdoches that are in violation of of a minimum lot size. So with that, what what we also wanted to talk to you about was looking at, because if you were to put that in a percentage side of things, that's nineteen percent of all lots within the city of Nacogdoches right now are in some level of nonconformity, which is a fairly high number. And so what we wanted to see if, and again, I'm not sure if this is going to be an option or not, but instead of it it going to zoning board of adjustment, or we acknowledge the fact, or we come up with a number that is that is good with, I'm sorry, planning and zoning commission and and the city council to say is that, is there something that these existing homes or if they were part of a plat or if they were they were subdivided at a certain particular time, that they could be, you know, I know a lot of people use the word grandfathered, but they could be grandfathered in the way that they are currently situated. Or if we can allow for dimensional variances within staff's purview of in between, let's say, five percent, maybe three percent, who knows what that number might be, but is there somewhere in there that might help, you know, these folks that have these these issues? Either they were, they were subdivided before zoning, which dictated fifty by a hundred as a minimum, and they are ninety by, you know, seventy, and so now they're they're at a loss. And so, but they meet all other per property development standards. So we're, we don't know what that that, if if there is a level of, I guess, if if you would give that authority, or I don't know if it's authority, but.
Let me, let me, maybe I can say something to this. I I we're we're in kind of a a quagmire here in this town now. I don't know how familiar you you are with Nacogdoches.
Yes, sir.
It's very, very difficult for a builder to come in and do a plan development.
Yes, sir.
It's very, very difficult for a builder to come in and and put in the infrastructure and do a hundred and eighty-three homes. We've got one of those right now that's, it's it's in limbo. It's, it's in limbo. So, we've talked about infill. So this is basically what you're talking about is, these three thousand lots would be infill, right?
Most of them are, or, it, it kinda varies, yeah, there, there are, there are quite a few that are out there.
But the three thousand are vacant lots, right?
I, I didn't go to that, that, that extent.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding.
I don't know, I mean, they, they could be, but I'm just saying there's three thousand parcels, if, that that person decides to redevelop, yes, now they have to meet all of the ordinance requirements, right? So, I'm looking for, or, n- not today, I'm just saying is that, maybe there is, if, if you're open to it. We could probably come up with some recommendations, um, that if they make sense to the city, you know, if they, if it makes sense to. Help a person, and, and I could do further investigative, uh, work for these particular lots, 'cause we do have the data here, which is great, I mean. I, I told Steve, the gentleman that was here, Steve Bartlett, um, when I first came here, I've seen lots of people's GIS systems. And I'd have to say that this city, being a small city, is one of the best that I've ever seen. I mean, it's very robust, and I think it offers a lot of information that we can utilize to, to make these kinds of decisions, so. Um, if that's what, uh, if that's what you guys would like us to do, and we would love to have that conversation.
Nathan, would this apply to depth, length, and lot size, or?
Yes, so dimensional lot standards, those are all property development standards, and so. I'll give you an example, is that if you go to some, certain cities, there is a date. We, we kinda have this date in our, in our, in the city's code. But there are certain restrictions about it that it makes it very difficult, it doesn't, it doesn't truly grandfather that piece of property. So, it would need to be adjusted for that to actually occur. But there are cities that allow, after, you know, if this lot was in this certain configuration before nineteen seventy, or whatever they decided has that date. Um, then that, that property is grandfathered the way that it's, the way that it was, um, subdivided. Or even if it wasn't subdivided, it was just done by meets and bounds, they allowed it to stay as is, and then that person could apply for a building permit. So, there are, there are lots of different ways to do it, um, it's just that what's, what, what is Nacogdoches comfortable with? And so, that really concludes, very high level. Um, there are a lot of more, if, if you had time to read, um, the subject, the why, and the research. Um, there's, there's a lot of information in here, but we would be happy to answer any one of staff is more than welcome to. I'd be happy to get on a phone call with any one of you, or come back to hear if there was more information that you're looking for, but. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
So we have fifteen minutes to have a discussion of these one hundred and thirty-five pages. That you've spent.
No, we're, we're gonna have another meeting, Kathy. We're, we're, we're.
I have.
It, it's impossible to do this, and then.
It's okay, it, that's fine with me.
We just wanted to start somewhere, because we know how, i- in, in the, in the effort to bring everyone together. It, it took about a month and a half just to, to make that happen, so. We, we just wanted to get this in front of you, so, um, and if there's anything else that we can do to provide clarity, we're, we're here to do so.
I do think there are little things that will have a huge impact and big things throughout here that have a, a huge impact. I mean, one little thing is changing twenty days to make an appeal, um, when, once something is, is permitted to the zoning board of, board of adjustments. I mean, that's a hu- huge thing, 'cause people don't even know something happened in, for thirty days or forty days. There are little things like that, that, you know, that we may have disagreement, and there are things like feather signs, I mean, where do we want them? Where do we not? I mean, those are big issues, and then there are bigger things like the zoning and the, you know, R four and the. And parking is a huge deal, and including a family unit versus a family, and so. So I don't know how you wanna proceed, but I'm just telling you I have pages for myself.
And, and if I could offer any sort of, or maybe just a little bit of guidance, it would be is that. For the amount of time I've been, um, on, in municipal government. We're never gonna get everything right the first time. There's always, there's always an opportunity to come back, but if we're moving towards, you know, we're, we're taking steps to improve. That, that's also a way to look at it too, 'cause I don't think we're ever gonna get to it be perfect the first and, the first, uh. Chance at this, but I think what we can do is keep it on the radar and still have conversations.
And there, there's some things that you, you probably wouldn't be aware of, that are like, ah, that, that will have a huge impact. And we might not until we take it to some other people to look at, and that's, and thi- this is a huge deal, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your good nature, why, you know, walking through this with us. Um, I'm curious, why now? What, what, you said it's a national trend, is that what we're doing?
No, I mean, there is a national trend from a parking perspective, I mean, there's, there are.
And for infill and diverse density and.
There's a lot of different changes that happen, it depends on what you're doing, you know. This, this particular city has Euclid, uh, Euclidian zoning, right? Um, and, which is, it's very, um, you know, it's land use-based, it's, it's. Kind of, it's a little archaic, yeah, but it, but again, that has nothing, there's lots of people to have that, right? There's lots of people.
I mean, who, what, what, tell me.
There is just, if, I mean, what it means is, is that you have a very segregated way of, of, of zoning, right? Um, most people around here have that same types of zoning, don't, don't get me wrong, I mean, it's not a bad thing. It's just that there is, there is a, a national discussion right now to say, is zoning right for everybody? Is zoning right for every city? There are people that are actually removing their zoning from their city, because they're doing affordable housing, they're, they're looking at things a little bit differently. And so, but again, I'm not saying that we're ready to do this right now, and to answer your first question is that. Why now, right here, just these things? This was technically low-hanging fruit, and from our perspective. Yeah, we don't believe, even though, yes, there are some pretty big, um. I guess, uh, things that we would be discussing, but some of these changes that we're proposing, um, you know, there. I wouldn't say, there, there's a lot of other things that we probably could bring up that would be really divisive and, um, that would. Probably take many, 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 uh, workshops to do.
It sounds like a comprehensive plan to me.
Yes, sir, that, that's probably a good word.
So why are we doing a comprehensive plan right now?
No, no, these are just, uh, zoning, uh, updates. The comprehensive plan is, is way more encompassing and way, way more high-level, um, but it also.
Would it change these same things?
I don't think it would have a major impact to a lot of it.
On parking and zoning and?
Um, it depends, you know, it depends on the way that we wanna go, or the way the city would wanna go, but zoning, um, you know. I don't think, to, to, to remove zoning, I don't think anybody's ready for that, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a really big discussion, but. I, I was just kinda more saying is that these discussions are happening nationwide, and so.
Rick, go ahead, I'm sorry. The only thing I was gonna say is, the real genesis for this was just cleanup on language, that's what started it.
But it seems like it's changed a little bit from cleaning up language, has it, to?
Well, I, you can blame me on the vape shops.
Thank you.
Just go ahead, go ahead and do that, uh, I mean. Um. I'll try not to make any jokes about that, but, uh, no one smoked their way to success, I don't think. Maybe Cheech and Chong, maybe Cheech and Chong, but other than that.
George.
Um, but. The rest, you know, we will be coming back, we are, you know, working on the comp plan larger issue, and we'll be bringing those to y'all. Uh, for, at some point, hopefully in the near future, on, on the next steps on that. Um, but really, it started with language, and there were a few other things that, between. Staff, Nathan. Where'd my echo go? Okay, now I'm echoing again. Jerry, that there was just cleanup, uh, really just to make sure something was definitionally there, or. There was enough clarity that you had something that was legally defensible, if, where it was just muddy. Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct.
Okay, that.
That's the fault of all this, a lot of it's, there was a lot of. Lack of definition in some respects, um. Overlap, and we saw a lot of stuff that was just taken out because it was just competitive, and so removing a lot of that stuff. So that takes up a lot of that, those red lines that you see in there, it's gonna be a, the boss with those kind of things.
You mentioned some cities removing some zoning language.
Yes, sir.
I would look at the largest cities are doing that, but the smaller cities, they are tightening their zone language. And, and because, now, there are some smaller cities due to economic development, uh, loosening their zoning language, but.
Yes, sir.
Smaller cities are actually tightening their zone language.
You're right, it, it was more of, um, an observation to say is, is that the conversations are happening, that's all, but, um. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer.
Nathan is referring to like, planning view of the world. And I don't, I think you have the rest of the world, and you have certain parts of the country where they've brought up that as an impediment to, to housing. I would also point to, having grown up in Houston, or having worked in Kima, neither of which are zoned. Then again, neither of which are above sea level at any given moment. I've also worked in Galveston, the Galveston was zoned. Um, but you have every. Is there a right, in this world, is there really a right answer, a right or wrong answer on that? You can point to scenarios where Houston and, in certain times, has been more economically resilient, maybe because of it. And you can also point where there's a lot of conflicts, and there's a lot of other things that you don't wanna live next to. So, we have to take into account the city's history, the land, the current land use, the university, and where we wanna go. Where the community wants to go, where y'all wanna go with it as representatives. And we are gonna be coming back with some things to try to address housing in all categories. In terms of incentives, land bank, commercial side, and all the above. Now, I admittedly started kind of in planning, don't consider myself a planner. And I think anything we do needs to be, no offense, Nathan, kind of applied practical. I deliberately refuse to be a member of AICP or ICMA for that, for that matter, for that very reason. 'Cause I don't think it's nuts and bolts, real world, all the time, so there are some good things from it. And we take the good things, and everything else we apply where it makes sense. That'd be my, my recommendation.
There's. In my opinion, there has to be zoning, 'cause I've lived in cities with no zoning. I've lived on a residential street where there was a shop like Home Depot, but it wasn't a national brand. In the middle of that residential area, they. Built the structures, the cell parts, and et cetera. That only added to the problem of early morning crew coming in, buying a lot of stuff to go out and do work. They taking up streets, and you're trying to get out, going to school, or work, or whatever. There isn't, no, there's, you have to have zoning, in my opinion, that's just my opinion.
Or a Roadrunner, uh, uh, truck stop.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Nathan, do you have a preference for how we can give feedback to you? Emails or phone calls?
Yeah, uh, either, either way is fine, um, or what we can do is we could, we could also, um. Staff can get together and we can come up with maybe when the next workshops would happen. And then in between that, if you wanna send, um, you know, emails, you can either send them directly to me, or we can send them to the planning email, or the planning inbox. And then we can, from there, we can kinda separate them out, answer them as we go, or whoever the city manager wants to do.
So, I, I just wanna jump in here, I wanna, on that topic. We've got some really smart people on our planning and zoning commission, as well as on the council. Uh, and we're not having a chance to fully invest our time in discussing the questions. As you get those questions, and you answer those, can you answer those in a written format so we can all have it? So the next time we have this discussion, we, we're well-versed, I, I'm not throwing stones here. I didn't know anything about a feather sign until I read this on Friday. So, having that opportunity for all of us to know what's going on when we have this next discussion, I think would be very valuable, because. I can't read anyone's mind here, and I know they have some great questions, and I wanna be able to make sure that I know everything that I need to know. And have thought of all the concerns, and can share those concerns with others, and bounce it off of, of people. I'm thinking about having a conversation with Maggie right now about these things, and how can we have that conversation before we get to this next step? And, uh, having everyone know all the questions that we're asking would be beneficial.
I, I, I think there's some things in here that we can all agree with as far as, is, uh, cleaning up. And redundancy, would you agree?
Yeah. Um, well, it depend, it depends, I think there are a couple places where I know we thought we were cleaning up, but it actually had other implications. But, I mean, redundancies are great, I mean, yeah, take, you can take the redundancies out, but, but some of the, anyway. And some of the steps that look like they were, that they were made sense, actually might have removed, you know, protections. So I'm not, I'm a little, are you trying to figure out if they do the, I, I'm thinking their next step is if we use, first of all, we have to use the same document when we're making pages. So I'm hoping this is the document that we will be referring to. I think, I think, um, maybe giving our feedback in the way that is being proposed. Um, might be the next way, because, I, I just hesitate to say, you know. I mean, I think the vape, the vaping is probably the one thing that, I mean, I would say, yeah, go for it the whole thing, but, you know. Um, but there's some other, you know, pieces that have tiny little, you know, things that are.
I've just tried to find some common ground somewhere that, that was, was pretty easy to get out of the way, and then start with the other stuff. Well, I think the common ground that we found is, what you said, you started out making changes to clarify.
Right.
But when it, when it's not clarifying, but it's changing the structure, the power structure, and who says what, and who votes on what, that's when things get sticky. Uh, for right now, I mean, if you stick to clarifying the language, let us attack that one first and say, yeah, that sounds great. But not when it's like, oh, oh, by the way, we're gonna make these decisions through another board, not you. Or through, you know, streamlining, where you're transferring power to city government rather than to the council. So, that's an easy start right there, just take a red mark and mark out all those changes.
And I, I don't think that there was any intent to change the, really the approval process. Um, and Jerry and Nathan can go ahead and clarify that, I don't think that that was.
You can't. Oh, no, no, there, there are some changes.
It's all based on ordinances, it would be, it would be with, defined within ordinances, and it would just remove a quick s- uh, step so that it would. Not further delay the process of development.
Right.
But all defined within clear boundaries, and go back to city council essentially.
Like you said, time is money.
Right.
Yeah.
And I would agree.
It's just that, the, some of, what we found was, some of the processes were, were looping and going back, and then back again. And you would still have that oversight, or the idea is that you would still have the oversight, and we would just enforce the ordinance, period, so.
Makes sense.
Except in the places that.
And we wanna get paid.
Well, of course, yeah, yeah, and again, remember, this is, these were just suggested changes, and these were things that we wanted to. Bring to you prior to making any sort of decision on our behalf.
We, I, I think every single person here appreciates it very much, including me, I, I really do appreciate it. I'm just trying to, you know, the devil is in the details.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's the, you know, the road to hell is paved with good intentions, so I wanna make sure we don't. Get anywhere near that.
Sure.
Anybody have any more questions from the audience or council or anything? We're, we're on a time line here, we've got another meeting at five thirty. Anybody have any other questions? If not, uh. Council or, or city manager and council will get together and we'll figure out another time to have another workshop. Is that all right?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, would, would we be violating the Open Meetings Act if we have internal discussions with more than one other commissioner about these? These proposed changes?
Probably.
As long as it's not a quorum.
Depends.
It would be, yeah.
Maggie, you will not have to worry about me emailing. I promise you, I will not email.
Well, I don't think the email would be about.
It would, it can, it can be.
I would address that to Nathan, Nathan will.
Right, but if he, if he responds with everybody's questions and his answers to all of those questions. Which makes a lot of sense from an operational point of view, is that a violation?
It could be.
It's a rolling horror.
Do you have advice for how we can participate in our conversation?
Well, I, I would think, I would keep it between Nathan and the, the individual, because once you sh- begin to share it to a group, at that point.
Call it a walk in quorum.
Um, and, um, and I, I think it is a violation at that point. So I would, I would. You know, raise your questions to Nathan, let Nathan address that to you, Nathan can bring that back to an additional workshop and say, hey, I received this question, here's how I answered it. And share it at that point, that's the best, that's the best course of action, even though it's gonna be more time-consuming.
Uh, could we?
Otherwise, we're gonna run into issues. Otherwise, we're gonna run into issues.
Well, if there is a common question, if there's an F A Q list that was distributable amongst us, I don't believe that would violate the Open Meetings Act.
As long as you're not identifying the person that asked the question.
So I think that would be an efficient way to do it because then you would pinpoint the commonalities, streamline that.
Of course, that's basically published to the public.
Right.
So as long as you don't identify the quest, the person that asked the question, that would make it okay? Because it really doesn't matter who asked the question.
Well, it does, if you're, I mean, it's, it's, we create your forum, but anyone who's involved in responding to that.
If I use Nathan as a conduit to get to you, then it could create a quorum based on communication.
Who else is also involved, you know? And it's, it's, remember, they changed the law where it's, it's not just blank communication, it could be a series of communications. And so, you know, it could be a, a, an email parade that may start here, but then it gets expanded and ultimately you've got a forum involved. And so, I mean, now you're in violation of the act.
So, so my suggestion is that you all get together and tell us, you know what we want to do. And you know, we, what we, you know, and I don't mind emailing a thou- you know, whatever I have. But, but um if you would tell us, give us the next steps and we'd be very happy to do.
I have suggested this on multiple occasions that we have an online public forum that would not violate the Open Meetings Act. We just never put that into practice and it is, it is a legal way for us to do it and we can all communicate.
I, I think there's a.
It's an exception of the opening.
Yeah, I think there's a moderator, is there a moderator?
There is a requirement.
Issue on that, um. That's why I stay offline. I need a moderator.
I don't do emails. I ain't sending you emails.
What, what about if everybody sends, on the planning commission, sends their questions or comments to Nathan? And then he doesn't even address them until y'all are pulled together in a workshop session.
That's fair.
And then, then it then goes back to y'all. If that makes any sense, I don't know. Safest.
And there could be due diligence amongst the city before it came back to the workshop to expand on that.
Yes. With, with the que- with the actual answers and comments back coming in the workshop session.
Or changes or suggestions, this is what we're gonna do.
That would be wise.
Okay, we're good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Nathan. This meeting's adjourned.
I'll, I think I have to do it too for us, uh, planning zoning adjourned.